I'd like to call this special meeting of the Pike County Fiscal Court to order, and I'd like to ask Brother Jimmy Dale Sanders if he would say the invocation for us.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for another day, and thank you for your all your blessings. Remember these court proceedings here today, and let it work well to benefit in glory of you. Remember all of our sick people, Lord, in this county, and remember our counties that hold, all of our workers. Remember the judge and his staff and all the people here. Remember us all, Lord, to try our utmost to make Pike County better than ever before. We thank you for all your blessings, Jesus, and amen.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Judge Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Robertson?
Here.
Commissioner Tackett?
Here.
Commissioner Booth?
Here.
We have a court, and we are ready to proceed. Dale, would you like to say the...Dale, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance before we leave?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief.
Before we go in, this is a special meeting because we've got a couple bids that we need to award to make sure that we can take advantage of some pretty low prices that we received on bids for two F-350 trucks. But before we do that, I want to take an opportunity to address the public in the court. You know, every day when I'm here at the courthouse, we have elderly people, people on a fixed income, who come in and are struggling to pay their garbage bills, but they do it. And a lot of those people remember the day, the time, in this county before we had mandatory garbage collection. A lot of younger folks may not remember that, because if you've been...if you were a child in the 1980s, or you're born after 1985, you wouldn't remember that, because it's always been that we've had a solid waste system here in our county, thanks to Governor Patton, who, of course, was in the county judge executive. And it was very controversial at the time that it was done. A lot of people thought, well, he'll never get reelected, you know, it was the worst thing to happen. But in fact, it was the best thing that ever happened to this county, because it cleaned up thousands of illegal dumps. I remember when I was a young boy on Abner Mountain, Doug, up past your grandfather's store, every wide spot was a dump. People would just throw their garbage in any creek or any stream. We've cleaned up a lot of the straight pipes. And it's given us an opportunity, because without a clean environment, you're never going to transform this economy. And we are behind the eight ball. We've got thousands of people that have left, we've got people that have lost their jobs, their families are moving, our school systems losing students. And it puts a tremendous burden on those of us who stay here, whether you run a business like I do, or whether you're on a fixed income. I mean, it's a burden that all of us have to shoulder. And what's frustrating, though, is when people have the ability to pay and they don't. Since the first of the year, we've identified over 650 customers, 650, that were getting garbage service, that we're not paying for. And if we catch somebody that's utilizing air services, we give them an opportunity to sign up and to catch up on what they owe past due, am I right, Judge? They have to come in and pay. Last week, we had an individual who happens to be an attorney, said that we were not doing it the way we should in terms of putting it on the garbage bill. Statute says that we have to send notice 60 days before the garbage...the property tax tickets go out, that there's a delinquent bill before we can put it on the tax ticket. Well, last year, we sent two bills out, one in February, that plainly stated what the balance was, and it also stated plainly that if you don't pay your...any delinquent balances go on your property tax ticket. When we did the supplemental bill in April, it plainly stated past due amount, and if it's not paid by the end of the year, it goes on the ticket. So we were well in advance of the 60-day notice. We didn't send it on the 60th day, and I don't think that's what the statute requires. I think it's clear that it was 60, at least 60 days before. We more than met that. And if you know you've got six months before that property tax ticket's going out, that you owe it, you've been told twice, you don't have any reason not to pay it. Some individuals may be entitled to an exoneration. A lot of people who were complaining on Facebook about their property tax going up, that's not accurate. We talked to...you know, the paper wrote an article about it. I'm going to address it again. This court never raised your taxes. This court is committed to not raising taxes. But we can't run solid waste if we don't have the revenue. When your landfill is going to be full in three and a half years and have been ignored, this court had to act, and we did that. But what's frustrating is when you have lawyers and other individuals who've practiced law in this county for years, and, of course, this is just a general statement, and they don't register for occupational tax or net profit tax, and you have landlords that we have written letters to that don't respond. Let me give you some statistics. We have 100...I think it's 141, is that right, Ms. Rutherford, individuals and businesses that we have written letters to, businesses that we know are operating, landlords. And it's just like this individual we were contacted about last week. We had no idea they were a landlord and possibly entitled to an exoneration, because that person never registered with our occupational tax office. So if someone doesn't register, we have no way of knowing if they're a landlord, or if they're just a...you know, we have no way of knowing what they're doing. But what's frustrating is there's more than 140 people that we've requested the information from that have not provided it. And some of these are businesses. And what the people don't realize is since this third quarter of 2015, we're more than four years into having an occupational tax. People know that tax is due. And I've got Mr. Harry Keith Hall, our county attorney here, and we're going to let him say a few words in a minute. Mr. Keane is celebrating his 20th wedding anniversary and couldn't be here today. But when you have 140 people that just ignore what correspondence that they're getting from our occupational tax office. For the 2016 year...I'm sorry, 2017 year, we've got 188 delinquent taxpayers in our occupational tax office. Those are ones that we know filed but didn't pay. Is that correct? Come up here, Ms. Rutherford, so that way somebody...if they want to hear it real quick. So we had 188 in 2016 that signed up but didn't file?
Correct. They are signed up and in the system, but...and they receive the forms as we mail them, but they did not return them and file them.
Okay. And then 243 delinquent taxpayers for the next year in 2017?
Yes.
And we don't have all of 18 put together, correct?
That's right, because some of those are still coming in. Even though they're delinquent, there's still some 2018s coming in.
So my question for you is, a lot of these individuals have had repeated letters. Is that true?
That's true. You'll see that a lot of ones on this 2016 year are the same ones that were on the 2017 year. Sometimes they...
I mean, are they just ignoring the county? And I know Mr. Keane has assisted county attorney sent letters, is that correct?
Yes.
And is it your understanding that failure to file is a crime?
Yes.
It's tax evasion?
Yes.
And if you're doing business in the county, and you're also failing, you know, say, practicing law, and you've not registered, would that also be tax evasion?
Yes.
Okay. And that's a crime?
Yes, according to the ordinance, it is.
And my question, Keith, is what can we do? What can your office do? I mean, it's frustrating that we have people who we have sent repeated letters to, people who know what the law is, and they just ignore it. What can we do? What can your office do to help us on these?
Okay, let me quickly tell you, Judge, that's a good question, and you know the answer, but you want to let me share the information as well, because it needs to be shared. A lot of people don't know this, but out of every $1,000 someone pays...I'm just throwing that number out there. I'm sure a lot of people pay a lot less, and a lot of people pay a lot more, but it's a good even number. About 120 of that is for the fiscal court, for Pike County. The other 880 is money that's collected for other entities.
You're talking about the property tax?
Property tax, yeah. Let me quickly get that out of the way. Property tax. So a lot of people don't realize that the state collects the property tax. A lot of people think this county is involved in collecting property tax. It's actually the state. The state, in turn, contracts back with my office to collect that, and then the state takes the money and redistributes it. That's how I ended up with quite a bit of confusion a while back over one particular payer, because I collect for the state, and when the state calls up and says, we'd like to do this, this, and this, I defer to them a little bit. The occupational tax is something that would follow up on the county, and also the garbage collection would follow up on the county. And I try to explain to people when they call in, look, for the state, I'm dealing directly with you and negotiating, because I've been contracted to collect that. On the garbage and the occupational tax and other fees, it's the...your fiscal court, your county is collecting it. And we, as their attorney, and we've got a real good person here that's a big asset to both myself and the...our county judge, I keep wanting to call him Senator Jones, big asset to all of us, is there's lawyers in town, and then there's real sharp lawyers, and Kevin Keane's really sharp, so truly a big asset. I think we over...I've overworked him on my end, and I'm sure Mr. Jones has overworked him on his end as well. He probably works an 80-hour week, I bill him a bit, and he's my neighbor, so I see him out all hours. And he also is a family man, and he tries to put a lot of time in there, who I don't think he sleeps. But with that given, yeah, I think we just go back to the good old days. All the thing is, is I think any...is anybody in here worked as debt collection, whether it be a bank or anything? When you're doing debt collection, you're working down a list. Local banks are only as good as the people that borrowed the money. Businesses...a restaurant is only as good as their customers. This fiscal court's only going to be as good as the payers. We could put the leverage on, the judge is already putting the heat on, my office will sue.
How about criminal charges? These individuals that are ignoring letter after letter after letter, including from your office...
Yeah, my understanding is the city has always filed criminal charges.
The city, when I was assistant county attorney, and you were district judge...
And we'd beg to them, we'd say, look, file your return, we'll try to collect off you later. File your return, get us out of criminal court anyway. At least we know what you owe, could work with you there, so...
But you have people who have just ignored this law for four years, and it's not fair to the taxpayers that are paying it. It's not fair to the people who struggle to come in here and pay these garbage bills and help sustain county government when people that do own...
Businesses should be talking to their accountants. I've worked, talking to my accountant right now, because I have to do a city-county, and a lot of attorneys are doing work in the county and in the city, and there's a fair way to portion that for everybody, because any attorney that says all their business comes out of the city, it benefits...this is something to think about, anybody that has a business in the city. And I'm not trying to pull money out of our city of Pikeville, but if you work in the city of Pikeville and you do business in the county, the county occupational tax is 1%, cities is 2%. I'm not an accountant. We've got some people in here that are pretty sharp in numbers. Probably benefits you somewhat to declare that some of your businesses in Pike County. It obviously does not put an additional burden on you, and in fact alleviates part of your taxes if you're working in the city of Pikeville, assuming that you're filling the Pikeville return out as well.
If we got a list to you, what do we need to do to start implementing criminal charges against some of these people who are just repeatedly refusing to respond to our office?
It takes about two minutes to type one up, so we can do 30 an hour. We're ready to go anytime.
Well, we'll get a list over to you this week, sir. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I know the commissioners...Jill, would you like to address this issue?
I'll make sure mine's done.
Commissioner Robertson, would you like to address this?
Judge, you know, when we first took office, we gave a amnesty program, you know, for garbage and occupational tax, you know? We can't keep up the services we've got in this county if we don't collect our money.
And the bad part about it, Commissioner, is that a lot of the people who aren't paying have the ability to pay. If you look at this list, which is not public record, you'd be shocked at some of the businesses that are just simply ignoring our occupational tax office. I think that's a fair statement, isn't it, Ms. Rutherford?
Yes.
I mean, we can't keep sending letters and wasting postage, because, you know, nothing's been done, and the three years before this court came in, nothing was done to hold people accountable. And it's not fair. It's freeloaders that don't pay their way. It's not fair to all those people who are struggling to do it. And I think a lot of people out there that are struggling to pay their garbage bills and pay these property taxes agree with that, that the people who have the ability to pay and don't, there's no excuse for it.
Well, this goes right back to, you know, we can't provide services if we don't collect our money.
Senior citizens, fire department, road, solid waste, all the services that we provide, 911, you can't pay for it if you don't have the money.
That's true.
Anything else for me, Boy? On a brighter note, I want to say congratulations to the Belfry Pirates for their state championship in 3A, and also to the Pikeville Panthers. For a lot of years, I represented Johnson County. We also had a state championship come back to Eastern Kentucky in Johnson County. So to all those mountain teams, congratulations. I know Commissioner Booth was down there as a former Belfry football player, is awful proud of the Pirates. Commissioner, would you like to address that?
It was just an awesome Friday for Pike...for Pike County, whenever Pikeville and Belfry both won in that game. We've come back with the team, and 3:00 a.m. we was on the lot, so we're at Belfry High School, so that was really great. And then for Johnson Central to win, I mean, it was just great for Eastern Kentucky, but especially for Pike County on Friday. It was really awesome.
All right. Anything else come before the court, before we move on to the agenda? If not, then the next item is Mr. Fannin. Would you please come up, and we have some bids to award. That's the purpose of this meeting today.
Yes, we had a bid opening on December 3rd on bid number 43-2019 for two 2019 or newer one-ton trucks. There were three bids received. The first bid was from Bruce Walters Ford from here in Pikeville on truck number one, a 2019 Ford F-350 four-wheel-drive diesel. The bid was $42,732. On truck number two was also a 2019 Ford F-350 four-wheel-drive diesel. The bid was $44,747. The second bidder was Sarchoni Ford of Randolph, Ohio, truck number one, a 2019 Ford F-350 four-wheel-drive diesel. The bid was $42,656.50. Truck number two bid, also on 2019 Ford F-350 four-wheel-drive diesel. The bid was $42,656.50, two identical trucks. Third bidder was Keystone Ford from Chambersburg, Pennsylvania. On truck number one, it was a 2019 Ford F-350 four-wheel-drive diesel. The bid was $38,480. Also, truck number two, a 2019 Ford F-350 four-wheel-drive diesel, an identical truck, also a bid of $38,480. All the trucks meet the specifications laid out in the bid package. However, the bid from Keystone Ford in Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, although they were the lowest bidder, their trucks surpass our specifications laid out in the bid package. These two trucks also have a locking differential. They have a power equipment group, which gives you the power windows, the power door locks with keyless remote entry, power and heated outside mirrors, class-five trailer hitch with integrated trailer brake controller in the dash. It has the snowplow prep package. It has the Ford platform running boards already on them, and it also has the upgraded 10-ply all-terrain tires. Therefore, it's my recommendation that we award the bid to Keystone Ford from Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, on both trucks for a bid price of $38,480 each, and a total cost for both trucks of $76,960. Also, Judge, if we can, if we do approve these trucks, we would like to be able to allow the treasurer to write a check to be able to pay for them.
All right. So the matter before the court is the awarding of bid number 43-2019 for two 2019 or newer one-ton trucks, and these will be used with the EZ load beds that we purchased at the last court meeting. We have one existing truck, and this is something we may talk about here in just a minute after we deal with this. So is there a motion to award the bid for these two trucks to Keystone Ford in Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, for a bid price of $38,480 each, for a total of $76,960? And that was about $8,000 to $10,000 cheaper than the other two bids, correct?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion?
Greg, what's the...tell me the difference in these prices. I mean, is it...just explain this state bidding to me.
The state bidding?
Yeah.
Well, the problem...
What's the difference in the 40...from 44.747 to 38.480? I mean, are there a difference in the trucks? Are there...is it...I mean, was it state bid and one price that...
Here's the thing, as we talked about in our last court meeting, on a state bid, we could have bought them off the state bid package, state bid price, but the Chevrolets weren't going to be built to the end of January, and we wouldn't be available till the 1st of April. The Fords weren't going to be built till the end of December and wouldn't be, you know, ready till the end of March. That's why we tried to find something that was sitting on a lot somewhere, because we needed them as soon as possible. So as far as...these aren't state bidding price, although this 38.480 is cheaper than what we could have bought it off the state bid price for.
It's also my understanding that the two trucks for 38.480 actually have...are better equipped than the other trucks. Is that...
Correct.
So you can't get something off state contract price unless it's available through the state contract dealer, correct?
Yes, and on the state contract pricing on vehicles like that, what you have to do is order it. So it's, you know, you're down the road depending on the build date a few months before you can actually get the truck. And we, you know, had talked about how we need these trucks as soon as possible.
Darren, how hard are these trucks going to be to work on?
It's just a matter of anything you have to do with those Fords, you have to lift the bodies off the...that's the one is. Have you got a turbo issue or anything like that? You have to lift the body off the engine.
I know we've got like a 100,000-mile warranty or 60,000, but I'm going to tell you, it's not going to take long to put those miles on that truck. It's just one thing that I'm concerned about is the hard part is to work on these trucks. I mean, you know, the options we have are you wait...if you put a spec out on a Dodge truck, you're about $12,000...how much more, Greg, per vehicle?
Yes, sir. I actually looked at some Dodge with the Cummins, which is a six-cylinder diesel engine instead of an eight-cylinder. The closest one was 400-some miles away, the package that we need. And with the package that we needed in that truck, after all the discounts we qualify for, it was going to be $49,000 or $50,000. So together with the two trucks, we're looking at $25,000, $26,000 more if we went with the Dodge with the Cummins six-cylinder diesel.
And then how...and then what about the Chevrolets? The Chevrolets, what...
The Chevrolet, they didn't build a 2019 regular cab, one-ton or three-quarter-ton truck, which is what we need. And if we ordered one, they weren't going to start building until the end of January, which means we'd be the 1st of April getting them. That's, I think, what the court preferred, was the General Motors product with the Duramax diesel and Allison transmission, but we would be the 1st of April getting those if we ordered them.
I mean, it's...you're...
I mean, I'm...I like Fords. I've used them for 20 years now in my business, Dodge, Ford, International. But I just want to know what the difference was, and you explained to me that these are not state bid, right?
Correct.
What was the state contract price be for those, Greg?
It was right at $41,000.
So we're getting them about three grand below the state.
Now, also, I mean, I mean, the bid was for the base truck, $41,000. These trucks have a lot of upgrades with the running boards and the power package and that kind of thing, so it will probably be significantly more than that.
Another thing that concerns me, these trucks are 460 horsepower, Greg. 460 horsepower in a three-quarter-ton truck. Or a one-ton truck. How much fuel is your Ford use?
I'd say probably...
How many?
Probably about $3.
Jason, what model is your Ford truck?
Mine's a 11, and I've got 241,000 miles on it.
Any problems on it?
Just some sensors, but that was after about $140,000, somewhere in there. The big thing is, we've got to get some trucks on the road. I agree. I mean, you got to have...I mean, we can't...how many Packers have we got down right now? So mini-Packers.
I'd say a bunch. Darren, how many Packers we got now?
Three that I can count, mini-Packers, two Packers out there.
Three mini-Packers and two Packers. I mean, we got to get some trucks on the road, Ronnie, that's the only...
So how long are we waiting on...did you say two to three weeks on the bids that are the...
The EZ dump dumper, yeah. We placed an order about two weeks ago for the existing dumpsters, and we were four to six weeks out two weeks ago, so two to four weeks we should have the other two. If we go ahead and lock down two more trucks, I would assume we go ahead and place the order for the other two dumpsters, and then we'd be four to six weeks on those.
I know it's...it's just a big decision, you know? I know the last court, you know, they bought the Dodges, but they bought the wrong kind of trucks, you know? We went with gasoline engine, a light-duty transmission, and that's where it's got us in this mess before, but, you know, I know we need the trucks, so...
I'm not a Ford man, I'll just tell you. You can't sell me a Ford.
Rebid it, and we'll be back here the 17.
That's my case.
That's the only thing...I mean, I don't know what else to tell you.
I wouldn't have one.
What'd you say, Darren?
I mean, I'm just...let's go back here for a second. I'm with my argument, y'all, y'all have got the votes to do what you want to do on it, but we need trucks. You need them in about three or four weeks to pick this garbage up. You've got two trucks for $10,000 to $10,000 less than any other bid. I'm not a Ford guy either. I'm driving General Motors. I don't own a Ford. And...but, you know, Jason's had good luck with his. People that run the F-250s, F-350s, like Rightway Concrete, that's all they run. So, I mean, you know, you can get these two, get them on the road, and then we can see if they...how they do, and if it don't work, then, you know... The problem is, the last court, when they bought six Dodges, they were stuck with six that didn't work. This way, if you get two, and they seem to do okay...
Yeah, it worked, Judge, we're still working on it.
I know. I mean, I'm just saying, I would try...my position is get the two Fords. It's a great price on them. Let's get them on the road. If they don't work out, then, you know, we'll know fairly quick what we're dealing with, and we know what the guys are doing at the garage. But you got to have trucks, and how long you want to...you can't...you want to wait. And I don't see, with the financial situation we're facing, spending another $20,000 or $25,000 to get Dodges with the problems we've had with them. And, you know, the Chevrolets, you know, again, how we don't know how much those are going to be.
Considering me being the only Ford person up here, I'll probably be sitting at another table by myself about the 17th, the next court meeting.
All right. Let's be just...is there a motion to award this bid for these two trucks? If we don't...if we don't award them, we're going to lose them. That's why we had the special meeting today.
I just want to say something. We found some Dodge trucks, and they're around $39,000. So I'm going to go ahead and make this motion to buy these two trucks, but a bid needs to be sent out on the Dodgers the next time.
But we need another truck, because we talked...I talked to Commissioner...
Probably going to need two more.
Well, I talked to Commissioner Tackett. We've got Fabian's, the red truck that they bought for him. Then you've got these two. We need one more. And I don't think we take...the specifications say that they need to be a ton truck, and I think we need to...let's buy it. If you want to get a...put a bid out on one of the Dodges, and we can put a bid out on a Dodge and see. And that way, I'd like to have a standardized fleet, but it's just been, you know, my dad's...
Well, I don't have anything against the Ford either, you know? I went down there to the...what we bought for the solid waste Foremans, you know, and they're turning out to be pretty good trucks, you know?
good trucks, you know? So, I don't have anything against the Ford. I just... I just... I'm concerned about 460 horsepower in a one-ton truck. You know, that's a lot of...
They've got some horsepower to them now.
Yeah, it's going to burn some fuel.
Well, part of that, too, is going to be making sure the drivers are keeping their feet out of them and monitoring the...
You can also set the speed limit on those trucks, too.
On the Fords? That needs to be done, then.
I don't know about that package, but I know Mike and I can set it. We won't run over 55 mile an hour, 65, whatever you want to set.
Judge Hickman thinks you can, and I think that's prudent, that's something that needs to be done anyway. There's no reason for one of those trucks going over 55 miles an hour.
I make the motion.
All right. We have a motion to award this bid to Keystone Ford for a total purchase price of $76,960. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
We were second by Commissioner Tackett. Is there any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
No.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
All right. Would you go ahead and spec out, and let's... Because we need one more truck at least, and let's get a bid package put together on some alternatives to the Fords, just to see. And I think we talked about that months ago, and not getting all the same trucks, just to make sure, you know, if they don't work out, fit the needs, that we're not stuck with six of them, so...
I will. Thank you. Also, the dealer told me that if we approved this and we wanted these trucks, that he could deliver them Thursday. Something about he's going to overnight me a package. Something about in Pennsylvania law, they have to keep a signed copy of an MSO on file. So, he's... As soon as I let him know, he's going to overnight me the MSO for me to sign and overnight back to him, so he can make a copy, and then he'll be ready to deliver the trucks Thursday, if that's what we want to do.
All right. Greg, does these trucks already have the spray-in bed liner in them, too?
No, sir.
They don't?
No, sir.
Well, spray-in bed liner. Well, that's the first thing we need to do, get them back here. We've got to put a bed liner in them.
The other two trucks that we were talking about...
Do we need to do a bed liner or a spray-in liner?
I think I would put a spray-in liner in. It's what I think I'd do.
Can we do that at the garage, Darren?
I've got the prices and a couple vendors about doing that.
If not, it'll eat that... Leach aid and stuff will eat that bed out in no time, so...
Well, I mean, and it's a whole lot easier to wash out. Instead of trying to bed liner, it gets wet underneath of it, and it starts to rust, so be better off to put a spray-in liner in it.
I agree.
All right. We'd next have Mr. Stacy for treasurer's business.
Judge, I've got two things for treasurer's business. The first thing would be to authorize a check to Keystone Ford for those two trucks that was just awarded for that bid, $79,000... $76,960, so I can write a check.
Is there a motion to authorize the treasurer to issue a check to Keystone Ford for $76,960?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Tackett. Is there any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
The last thing I have would be, there's a company that's going to transport the equipment that was bought at auction back here, and I think they said the invoice, I haven't seen it yet, is going to be like $3700. So, I would need like authorization for a check not to exceed $4,000. Once that invoice and they deliver that equipment, we can pay that transport company.
Is there a motion to authorize a check by the county treasurer for an amount not to exceed $4,000 for the transportation costs of the excavator and roller that we purchased at the auction in Alabama?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Is there any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is executive session. Mr. Hall, would you please just explain the relevant Kentucky revised statute, chapter 16?
Can I interrupt just a second, Judge? Darren, we're needing an engine for Paul's bucket truck. Well, Roger Aleswick has an engine for that truck, and he was willing to trade us that engine for a...
Blowed-up engine, huh?
On a blowed-up engine on one of the jitters? Can we make that trade?
Frankie, this is a question that I've not had come up. Can you answer this question?
Frankie, Roger Aleswick has an engine for Paul's bucket truck we've been needing an engine for, and he's willing to trade that engine for a blowed-up engine out of a jetter that we have over there.
Aquatech.
The what? Aquatech. Can we trade out with that?
I don't think you can. I think there's only certain ways to get rid of the county... The court can declare that... I guess you technically could. You could declare that piece of... That engine surplus.
You'd have to auction it.
And you could get two quotes for the fair value of what that engine is, and then, at that point, you can negotiate trade or whatever. But you would have to... The court would have to declare it surplus and then get two quotes of what its value is.
It's going to be surplus. I mean, it's...
Right. But you would have to declare it surplus, get two quotes of what its fair value is, and then I think what you're talking about would be all right.
Do you want to make it... Do you want to make it... Make a motion to declare it the jet... Is it the jet or your...
Yes, I'll make a motion. We declare the old jetter surplus, because it doesn't run, the pump's out on it. It's... We're going to put it in the surplus pile.
Okay. And then we need to get two quotes on what it's worth?
Two people that could quote what the fair value of what its value is. Two people competent to declare... To basically say what its value is.
Well...
Could you trade it, then, to...
I think you can, once you do that and declare it surplus. I think you can.
Can we get...
But you have to go through those steps.
Darren, declare it surplus or a value on it?
No, you have to have two different individuals probably that are not...
Just somebody that would know what the fair value of that is. That way, when you do trade it, sell it, whatever, you're getting the value for it. You're not getting...
Okay. We can do that.
Two estimates from somebody would be...
Yeah.
It could be two people, any kind of mechanic, anybody that works at a body shop, that would know basically about what the fair value of that engine is.
I just know Paul needs that truck. We've needed it six or seven times here in the last few months, Paul, haven't we? We need to get it back on the road and get it where we can use it.
And then, once you've declared it surplus, once you get those two fair-value quotes, you can go ahead and do that. You don't have to bring it back up for a court order to actually do the trading. I mean, that's the intention of the court, anyway, but I don't think you have to bring it back up for a separate vote to do the trade.
Okay. Good.
Once it's declared surplus, you'll be all right.
So, you... We got a motion by Commissioner Robertson to declare the torn-up jetter as surplus property? And then, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Booth. Is there any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
All right. Is there any other business to come before the court? And then, once we get those things... Those appraisals, then we can talk about the trade of the... To the engine. We'll probably get that done by next week. Darren, if you can get a couple of estimates put together on that?
Yes, sir.
All right. We might be able to act on that at the next court meeting, which will be a week from tomorrow. All right. Mr. Hall, can you read the relevant Kentucky revised statutes relating to entry into executive session?
Yes, thank you, Judge. Kentucky Revised Statute 61.810, commonly referred to as the Kentucky Open Records Exception, states that all meetings of... Where the quorum of the group is there conducting public business which is discussed or just discussing public business which is taken by the agency shall be public... Open to the public at all times except for certain exceptions. And the case... As in the case here, discussion of proposed or pending litigation against or on behalf of a public agency and/or subsection F, discussion of hearings which would lead to the appointment discipline of specific individuals. That's the summary of it.
All right. Is there a motion to enter into executive session? We have a motion by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Booth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
We will stand in recess and call the chair. We're back in from executive session, and is there a motion to exit executive session?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second? We have a second by Commissioner Booth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes. Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right. We don't have any personnel matters to address today. Department supervisors comments? Anything?
Next item is Mr. Hall. You have anything today, sir?
Judge, it's good to be over. The bad part about having a great person surrounding yourself with great people, they push you out of the way a little bit. So, having Kevin over here has been a blessing. I've got good people all the way around, and it's kept me around over here for 30 years. So, it's a blessing to know to come back over. It's been a great year, and tell everybody... Is this our last meeting before the holiday, before Christmas?
We have one more meeting.
Oh, I'll save it for then. I'll come over and tell everybody Merry Christmas then.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hickman, anything?
No, Judge.
All right. County Commissioners, we'll start with Commissioner District One, Ronnie Robertson.
I just want to tell the people out listening, we went to Montgomery, Alabama, last week, Jason and Fabian and I, and we purchased the county an excavator and a pretty new roller, blacktop roller. We went down one day and looked over. We wanted to buy a whole lot more, but we didn't have any money, so we used your money wisely, I think, on the excavator and the roller.
We probably could use two or three more excavators, so...
Yes, just the way the auction went through, some stuff came before, and we were really holding out for two more excavators, weren't we, Jason? And they went for a little higher money, so we didn't do that. They had some warranty on them, but I think we intend to go back in three months. We'll have another big auction down there, and we'll go down there and see what we can find, you know? The county don't have to pay a fortune for some of this equipment.
We actually spent two days out there, looking even after the auction had started, looking at the other equipment, and I felt that... And Ronnie and Fabian, we all discussed the prices on some of this stuff to spend the people's money of Pike County like it was ours at this auction, not just go down there and buy three or four pieces of prop... Or equipment and come on back to the house. I mean, we was underneath them and running them.
Yeah, we went over them very well, so I think these two pieces will serve the county real good in the near future.
Did you take time to see Hank?
He was gone, I believe.
All right. Commissioner Tackett, do you have anything else to say?
I don't have a lot to say today. I just want to thank the workers of this county, in this courthouse, out in the field, all across this county. I want to thank the people of Pike County. If any of them ever needs to get ahold of me, (606) 794-3658, night or day. Another thing I'd like to do is I've been getting some credit on something that I cannot take credit for, and that is at the Dorton and Long Fork Community Centers. It was the decorations and how it was... How good it looked with some people that have been having parties there, and I've got to give that credit to the Robson Creek and Verge Homemakers Club. And that's about it, Judge.
Thank you. Did you...